Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert to legislative concurrence.
On that motion without any objections, order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We have a committee report for Mr. Monti Mesa from the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens on his appointment to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board with Senator Rodriguez's Committee's recommendation to do confirm my move that that be placed in the voting file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert to the second reading file. For purposes of moving your resolution on the appointment of Ms. Anne Marie T. Munya to serve as alternate director of GBB Board of Directors.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
So, Madam Speaker, now that we're in the second reading file, as I mentioned, there is a resolution to that effect, and I move that this resolution be placed in the voting file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move then that we go to the voting file and that we vote on all matters in the voting file.
Thank you, Senator. We are now then in the voting file. So, we first bill that everyone should have is Bill Number 8-32COR.
Bill Number 8-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Respecho and Judith T. Wampat EDD, an act to appropriate to the Department of Education all additional revenue derived from the expiration of any part of the Bush tax cuts.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Panglinen. Senator Siniklis. Senator Panglinen. Senator Siniklis. There are 12 yea votes, 2 nay votes. Bill Number 8-32COR is duly passed by this body. Senator Respecho.
And Madam Speaker, I move that Senator Tommy Morrison be excused from today's voting.
Hearing objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. 9-32COR. Oh, are they still passing it out? Okay, so you should be getting 9 right now.
Bill Number 9-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Vicente Bency Panglinen, B.J.F. Cruz, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to add new Section 58148, 58148.1, 58148.2, 58148.3, and 58149, and to amend Section 58126 and 58115(c) all of Chapter 58 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board and the Qualifying Certificate Accountability and Transparency Website and amending Conflicts of Interest provisions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator McCready. Senator Respecho. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator McCready. Bill Number 9-31 received 12 yea votes, 2 nays. Bill Number 9-32COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 14-32COR.
Bill Number 14-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, TC Ada, TRM Barnes, an act to amend subsection C of Section 5123 relative to the maintenance of government vehicles, to add a new subsection E to Section 5123 relative to mandating the purchase or lease of vehicles by the government of Guam that meet or exceed a minimum average combined city and highway miles per gallon, MPG, of 25 miles per gallon, 25 MPG, and to add a new subsection F to Section 5123 of Chapter 5, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, to allow certain specialized vehicles to be excluded from the miles per gallon standard.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Bill Number 14-32 received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 14-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 22-32COR.
Bill Number 22-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada, B.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Respecho, an act to amend Section 2103.12 of Chapter 2, Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, relative to acting appointments in excess of 90 days.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Bill Number 22-32COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 22-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 24-32COR.
Bill Number 24-32COR, introduced by Frank V. Ugin Jr., an act to amend Section 7120.3a of Chapter 7, Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the waiver of special gold star license plate fees for the immediate kin of fallen heroes.
Can Sergeant Arms, please, at 24-32 to provide copies to Speaker Panglinen? Okay, so maybe can give it to Senator Ugin, because I think he gave him his copy. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
I'm good.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Bill Number 24-32COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 24-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 33-32COR.
Bill Number 33-32COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, R.J. Respecho, V.C. Panglinen, an act to add a new subsection D to Section 7105 of Chapter 7 of Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring proof-of-use tax payment as a condition of registration for vehicles acquired off island.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Bill Number 33-32 received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 33-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 2-32COR.
Resolution Number 2-32COR, introduced by M.F. Houstoniklis, R.J. Respecho, relative to adopting the vision and mission statement of Iminay Trantaitos na lihas la torang Guam, the 32nd Guam Legislature, which will help to establish a clear and concise focus that all of its members can apply to the legislative process.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada.
Resolution.
Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Panglinen. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Panglinen. Resolution Number 2-32 received 12 yea votes, 2 nays, and one excused absence. Resolution Number 2-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 10-32COR.
Resolution Number 10-32COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs and further amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat EDD, relative to supporting the United Nations World Health Organization Framework Convention on Tobacco Control, WHO-FCTC, and its efforts to address the global epidemic derived from tobacco use, to requesting that the Obama Administration support the WHO-FCTC and send it to the U.S. Senate for ratification, and to further requesting that the United States Senate ratify the WHO-FCTC.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Senator? Senator? Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Resolution Number 10-32 received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Resolution Number 10-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 13-32.
Bill Number 13-32COR, as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J. F. Cruz, Judith T. Wampat EDD, Chris M. Duñez, an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 70 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Guam Social Host Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Lim Tiako. Bill Number 13-32COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 13-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 40-32COR.
Bill Number 40-32COR, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation, and amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada, B.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Respecho, an act to amend Sections 58111 and 58112 of Chapter 58, and Sections 73110 of Chapter 73, all of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the penalty reclassification for violators of the FIRE Code.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Yes.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Panglinen. Bill Number 40-32 received 13 yea votes, 1 nay, and one excused absence. Bill Number 40-32 is duly passed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Carl V. Dominguez to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Works, roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Ugin.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
I'm good.
Senator Panglinen.
Sir.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita.
On the appointment of Mr. Carl Dominguez to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Works, received 14 yea votes and one excused absence, Mr. Carl Dominguez is hereby confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Anne Marie T. Munya to serve as the alternate director of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Senator Munya Barnes, you recognize?
Speaker Wampat, I just want to note for the record that, so that my colleagues will know, that the appointed alternate for the Guam Visitors Bureau is my sibling.
And you're--
So, I would love to vote for it--
You're requesting to be recused.
But if they need to be excused, then I'll take it.
So, the question is placed before you then to, should the Senator be recused from voting for this appointment? Who is, she declares her sister?
A question?
Okay, Senator Yamashita?
Madam Speaker, the question is, what relationship does an oversight chair have with an alternate director on GBB?
Well, in this particular case, she chairs, has oversight over GBB.
But the question is, what, does she chair?
No, the question is, I know that Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes is oversight chair for GBB, and we're now addressing Ms. Munya to be an alternate director on the GBB board. What relationship is that? I mean, does--
She, as an alternate member of the board, is, she will come in to vote if members are absent.
But, I mean, there isn't any kind of supervisory--
No.
The Senator doesn't have any authority over the directors of GBB, does she? I just posed that question, I'm not sure, you know, it doesn't seem to me, but I just wanted to know.
Just based on the--
If there is--
Yeah, and that's why, based on the public law, I just want to note for the record that she's my sibling.
She currently has oversight over the Guam Visitors Bureau. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
So, should she, should Senator Munya Barnes then be recused from voting? Are there any objections? No objections? Okay, so Senator, you be recused. So then, all in favor, please raise your hand. For Anne Marie to serve as the alternate director of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. Okay? Thank you, Senators. The clerks, you have the names, right? Okay, so Ms. Anne Marie T. Munya then is duly confirmed by this legislature to serve as the alternate director of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. On the appointment of, let me get this right, for Mr. Monti Delmar Mesa to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. That's a board member, so therefore, all in favor, please raise your hand. Monti Mesa to serve as the GIDEA Board clerks. So, Mr. Monti Mesa is duly confirmed by this body to serve as a member of the GIDEA Board We have exhausted the list of bills and resolutions and confirmations. I would like to just remind everyone that all names on the bills will be placed, all members will be placed on an alphabetical order as cosponsors, and should you decide to remove your names, please submit your letter to the clerk. Thank you. So, Senator Respecho, we're going to have the Imas Maladz and Puttimana Sakrafisho on Monday, on either recess. We need to go into the Committee of the Hall, so I'm calling upon you for, to make that motion.
Yeah, but before that, Madam Speaker, could you also announce the matter relative to the journals and how it's available for Senators to review?
Yes, this, today, as a matter of fact, then, is the final day for last month's session, the journal that has been submitted to you to review any of your statements, not to change anything, but to review to make sure that the information is accurate. You have until the end of the day today. For this session, you would have that same opportunity--